Good afternoon. We have reached the appointed time for our meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. It is scheduled on the third Tuesday of the month at four o'clock and the first and third, today being September 3rd. We will begin our meeting with an invocation by Chaplain Mike Stevenson. And Mike, thank you for coming. We'll let you offer that word of prayer.
Our dear heavenly Father, we approach Thee this day and give Thee thanks for the many blessings that we receive at Thy hand, blessings seen and blessings unseen. We ask Thee that Thou will be with our Commissioners this day, that they will work in harmony and that they will work for the good of the citizens of Washington County. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in this beautiful county and pray that we may do our civic duty to uphold and do those things which will make this county even better. We dedicate this meeting unto Thee at this time, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance today will be led by Paris Tomkinson of the Washington County Office Junior Explorers, Deputy.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we shall stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. Paris, what school are you in? Lovely. And what got you into guard and junior ROTZ or what? Great, well, glad to have you here.
Okay, thank you. Today's consent agenda is means of expediting routine matters which come before the Commission for consideration. And by the way, I'm going to stop right there and excuse Commissioner Victor Iverson, who is taking place, part in a panel discussion in Cedar City right now and is unable to be with us. And so, that's why Commissioner Iverson is absent. I'll go back to our consent portion. Is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any Commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Chair, I'll read in the items for our consent agenda. Item A, consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment for August 21st, 2019 through September 3rd, 2019. Item B, consideration of regular Commission meeting minutes of August 20th, 2019. Item C, consideration of administrative adjustments for real property. Item D, consideration of administrative adjustments for personal property. Item E, consideration of applications for property tax abatement, of which there are five. Item F, consideration of lease agreements between Xerox Financial Services LLC and Washington County Sheriff's Office. Item G, consideration of Council on Aging Social Services Block Grant for fiscal year 20, 2020, in the amount of $7,500 for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Item H, acknowledgement of publishing the Notice of Adoption of Ordinance Number 2019-1145-0, which was published on Saturday, August 24th, 2019. Those are the items.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will second your motion. And if, unless there's further discussion, I will call a question. All in support of approving today's consent agenda as outlined, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. On our regular agenda, is Susie here? There, wait, there we go. Susie, this is exciting. We've been really looking forward to hearing from you and having kind of a presentation on the outcome of the 2019 Washington County Fair. And I want to congratulate you for a job well done. That's, you know, you've took on an awesome assignment and did very well with it. So, we're looking forward to this report.
Thank you, minus the big dust storm we had right after our ribbon cutting that I thought was going to take the stage with it. We had a really great fair. Just a couple of numbers, I don't have a full report of numbers just yet. Wednesday and Thursday, we did have more cars or more people in attendance than in the past 12 years. They broke records that night, Wednesday, Thursday night. And then we also were the third, was the third biggest or most attended Friday night. And Saturday, we sold out at our demolition derby. We packed those stands. I think, I don't know what capacity is. I was told 4,500, but I think I may have gone a little bit over because there were, we had some security, huh? So, Friday night was a fantastic night. We had boxing. Friday night on boxing, we had more than they've ever had at the boxing arena. And our petting zoo was probably one of the best we've ever had. I heard nothing but compliments on our petting zoo, which was free to the entire public. And it was really great to see. We had Water Canyon High School and Snow Canyon High School, Dixie High School, Desert Hills High School, Hurricane, all helped participate in that petting zoo. It's a big fundraiser for the FFA groups and 4H. So, to have animals that came from Enterprise and from Hilldale and all over the county to have that petting zoo, it really was such a great county event, that, the petting zoo. I don't know, is there anything you want to specifically know about?
Well, one of the, I loved it and I saw the, one of my favorite memories, size of the llamas, where all those kids running around with those mini goats or dwarf goats or whatever you call them. And it was, it was mayhem, but every kid was just laughing their head off, be able to do that.
Yeah, and what was great about that petting zoo was because it was inside and more room this year, parents were able to just, in the pens, let their kids go and run and play and be with the fainting goats and with the guinea pigs and the pot-belly pigs and the Dexter cows. So, it really enabled them to really learn more about what we have here in our farming and ranching community in regards to animals and the area. And we had our Animal Education Center as part of that. So, the FFA, those kids, they absolutely loved it because they loved seeing all the families that came in and all the kids that came in and just kind of rolled around in the woodchips with the animals.
Yep, and it was a great environment for the animals as well.
Yeah.
Because it was temperature fairly consistent.
Yes, and we were very lucky this year. Our temperatures were pretty, I don't want to say mild, but they were a little cooler than they have been in the past. I think our hottest maybe was 101, 102. So, we lucked out. Our two new events that we held, the barrel racing and the junior rodeo, were fantastic events. They were free events. The stands in the outdoor covered arena were packed Thursday and Friday night. So, again, it just offered another opportunity for families to see what's going on here in Washington County in our area. So, we had, we had a fantastic time. But again, I don't have any specific hard numbers in regards to how much came in and how much went out until Jerry gets me that report. And the auditors have all the invoices in, I'm still getting invoices in. But really, this was such a collaborative effort. We had some great sponsors. Dixie Power was a sponsor. Park Cox Trucking helped sponsor. Four Seasons Auto helped sponsor our demolition derby. And then, of course, the 4H, Utah State University Extension Office was a great help. Our own Sheriff's Office with the manpower that they brought out to the fair and helped to make sure that the area was secure was hands down, was fantastic. I don't think there were any big incidents. We couldn't have been more pleased with how safe and how great everything was.
I saw that we had good ambulance service people there from the Hurricane Valley Fire and I thought they did a great job as well.
Yeah, and they also provided brush trucks when we did our fireworks every single night.
That's correct.
So, we're very appreciative to Chief Coleman out there at Hurricane Valley Fire and for his crew and the AMTs.
Please tell us about the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, how that came to pass.
So, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier was brought in through the St. George Exchange Club and the American Legion Post 90. And they raised the funds and provided all of that for that tomb, that replica to come out to Southern Utah. Those gentlemen had never been here. They are from Georgia. And so, we have a little different heat than they're used to, but it was probably one of the more powerful things that we've ever had at the fair. Having it out at the Harmony Building with all of the exhibits, it just brought a different feel, I think, to our county fair and also a different demographic to our fair. But it was great to see so many young people go and see that tomb because how many people can actually make that trip to Washington DC? But it was a real, like, actual life-size replica of that Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. So, it was nice. It was, there was no out-of-pocket money for the fair to bring them out here, but it was sponsored for the Exchange Club, from the Exchange Club and Post 90. Yeah.
And there's no doubt about it, people can say what they want about America, but they come here and go to a county fair, they will understand what we're really all about.
America becomes Americana. At that point, we get to see the people and it's a, it's a great view. Our volunteers, you mentioned Chief Coleman, but we have so many volunteers that it would be impossible to produce an event like that without their help.
Through Dixie serves, we logged over 400 volunteer hours for just our volunteers that helped in our information booths in the Harmony and the Grafton Building. So, we're very, very thankful and very lucky that people are willing to come out and work four-hour shifts and sit there. And so, yeah, you mentioned volunteers. Our entire fair board was all voluntary and who put in countless hours from helping us with the parade to entertainment to hospitality and making sure that our sheriffs and our security detail was fed. It just, it takes a whole arm, it really does take a whole army. It takes a whole village. It takes an entire county to put on a fair. So, all the accolades and thanks that you're giving to me, it really goes to the people.
Rotary, was there just the morning Rotary did?
It's the Red Rock Rotary that does the parking, the admission fees, and they use the money for grants. So, they turn around and give that money back into our community through different grants that they provide to different nonprofits throughout the year. So, it's all, it all stays local.
Susie, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks Pam Palermo as well.
Yes, she's up at the same meeting that Commissioner Iverson is at.
Hey, you did amazing work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Our next item, item two, is consideration of purchase requests. Ray?
Okay. All right, the first one we have is for tourism. It's the NJCAA sponsorship tournament in a total of $20,000. The next one is for our IT department. It's for some new server and support software because the software that we currently have is no longer supported, so we're kind of forced to upgrade there. The total for that is $16,742.16. The next one is for the Sheriff's Office. It's for multiple handguns and bolsters and a few other accessories in a total of
I'd like to make a comment on that if I could. In the past, we've hired deputies and they've been responsible for purchasing their own personal handgun as a duty weapon. And this is, I think, a really bold step forward where we're not going to ask our deputies to pay for their weapon so long as they work for the county and it's assigned to them, they'll carry it. If they quit or move on, whatever, they would render that weapon back. But it allows all of our firearms to be standardized and we'll see savings in ammunition, savings in training, and mostly, I think, savings for our deputies that don't have to buy that out of pocket for the privilege of working for us. So, it's for 142 firearms.
Okay.
Go ahead, carry on.
And then, the final one is for additional environmental surveys on the Shooting Sports Park, the Shotgun Drive. So, this one is not over 10,000, but it's in addition to one that we previously approved that wasn't over 10,000 either. So, the first one was for $6,317.10 and the additional work is for $7,269.40 for a total of $13,586.50. So, we, because of that ground total, we thought it appropriate to bring it.
This is for archaeological clearance and study for a 20-acre piece of land that the county is attempting to secure under recreation and public parks from the BLM. So, this is part of that process that we go through. Have we got any questions for Ray on any of these items?
No, Chair. In fact, I make the motion to approve these for-purchase requests as described and detailed.
Thank you, Ray. I'll second the motion. All in support of approving the purchase requisitions as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number three, consideration of Resolution Number R 2019-2503, a resolution approving public defender agreements. Nicole, can you bring us up to speed on that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, a few months ago, the county was awarded an IDC grant from the Indigent Defense Commission. And part of that grant allowed us to have an additional public defender contract. It's like for specialty courts, arraignments, mental health, things like that. So, through discussion and because that is a very new position for us, we're not exactly sure how it will grow, what the amount of cases it will consist of throughout the year. Doug Terry, who's our lead public defender, decided that it would probably be best for him to keep that housed in his office so that he could monitor it. We have to put reporting back to the state for us to get reimbursed. So, because of that, it opened up an additional general contract in Fifth District Court. So, we advertised properly for that and although we weren't required to.
The professional service.
That's correct. But we chose to. We wanted to make sure that everybody would be made aware of it. And we put a panel together with our Indigent Defense Commission, our lead public defender, and then I also sat on the panel. And from that, we all unanimously wanted to recommend to the Commission today of Jacob Fisher taking that general defender, that general contract and then having, and then also recommending that Doug Terry house that specialty court contract in his office. So, that comes before you today.
All right, thank you. Questions, Commissioner?
Nope, we've gone over it pretty thoroughly individually. Eric, have we made any changes to this agreement?
We, we changed, we made some tweaks to all of the agreements a month or two ago when the grant funding came in to kind of refer to the grant funding throughout the agreements. And, and so, the general, the general agreement for the district court is just the same one that all the other public defenders have. It will have eight of those. A specialty court contract just refers to the specialty courts that they'll be doing. They'll be doing the mental health court, drug court, and then arraign.
I think the public should know that almost every public defender across the country, and you may think of some exceptions, also have the ability to have a private practice as well, provided it does not conflict with their duties and obligations in the contract.
I know a lot of them do that. I know that we have approximately twice as many public defenders as prosecutors. And the reason for that is so they can carry private caseload on the side if they, if they choose to. Okay.
Based upon that, are there, one motion can approve both the agreement as well as Doug Terry's role over the new hire as well as hiring of Mr.?
Yeah, I've looked at where it has, it's cover both.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number R 2019-2503, a resolution approving public defender agreements and other items as noted.
And I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All in support of Resolution R 2019-2503, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number four, consideration of Resolution Number R 2019-2504, a resolution approving Tourism Advisory Board Recommendations. Brittany?
Hello.
Hi.
The Tourism Advisory Board met and recommends funding the following nonprofit events with tourism funds, which you know are paid by out-of-town visitors coming to Washington County and paying their transient room tax. So, the following events applied and were recommended for funding, $7,500 to the Silver Reef Museum for a two-month Maynard Dixon Wesley Powell display, $50,000 to Tuacan for marketing for their 2019-2020 season, $7,500 to the Hurricane Valley Chamber of Commerce for printing their 2020 guide, which also includes quite a lot of visitor information, $15,000 to Doc Uta for their event, which is moving to November of 2020 next year, $9,000 for Arts to Zion for an art and studio tour in the spring, $12,000 for the Desert Roads and Trials Society Winter Jamboree in January of 2020, and $3,500 to the Arts Council of Washington County for an Arts and Healing Conference in early 2020. And I think there's someone from all of those events here in the audience if you have any questions.
You know, I missed the Tourism Tax Advisory Board meeting where these were considered, but I really appreciate the quality of discussion that the Board has on these items. They've done a great job, I think, of vetting these for the county and making recommendations for the Commission. You got any questions for Brittany?
Simply, I represented you there and I realize that there are hurdles that each applicant has to go through and it has to be focused on giving back to the tourists that paid this tax. But at the same time, locally, we benefit as well.
Absolutely.
I see several that represent groups that receive funds that truly their heart is indeed to welcome people to the area and let them know what we represent and the talent that's here, but also to give back to the community.
Absolutely. We want to attract visitors and also have a big impact on the locals that can enjoy it. Absolutely.
And there's other projects that Brittany's still working on that are out in the wings that didn't quite qualify, but if they were to make some modifications or give further information, we may review that at a later date.
We tabled a few for, yeah, another meeting.
Hey. How'd you entertain a motion?
Chair, I'll make the motion, but is there anyone here that represents those groups that would like to say anything?
We've got a couple of them here.
Okay.
You're dressed for the weather.
I am, I'm dressed for this presentation, yeah.
So, I'm Sharon Shores. I'm one of the board members of Hurricane Valley Chamber. And the visitor's guide has traditionally been done by the Hurricane Valley Chamber. We've done it for several years. I believe it's been since 2013. This year, we're going to be extending out the reach of it because we're going to put on a, so I don't know exactly what this is, but the younger people will, a snap tag. Okay. And I know what a QR code is. We're going to use a QR code. So, the reach is going to extend out beyond the 10,000 copies we normally print with that.
Lovely.
And this is my colleague, Paul.
Got it all. It's a 52-page guide, it's all full color like that. We're expecting, we're changing out articles. We put a map in just like that. And we just want the visitors, the whole idea is to have visitors know what's going on in the community. If they know what's going on, they're going to stay a little bit longer because that's what people do when they travel. They want to go to activities that are localized and that's, that's the whole idea of just advertise those activities. We've put an annual calendar in there and hopefully they'll look at all that.
That is consistent with the state's Red Emerald Initiative where we want our visitors to come in and stay longer and spend a little bit more and get to see more of the county than just the national park. It's, it's truly a gem, but we have many others hidden treasures that are real easy to find. I think this will make it much easier for them to do that.
It's been a great project. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the most important public parts that we've talked about is that back page that has all of the contact information for emergency and public and other community outreach programs that not only are in Hurricane but elsewhere as well. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to say anything? I saw Arts Design.
Bobby? Bobby?
Hi, Marty. Well, once again, thank you for supporting the fence that we've been working on for the past 10 years. Been almost, it's been 10 years that I've been here working on this stuff. So, I really appreciate the support. Silver Reef Museum is just a gem. I don't know if you guys were at Doc Uta yesterday, but most of the people that were speaking, they are fully invested in that museum as well. And it's just so grateful for the support there and would love to have you come and see some of the things we're doing. This Maynard Dixon Wesley Powell exhibit is going to show people how important the art is in history. So, that's really exciting to us. And of course, the Arts Design Tour this year, we're including musicians, a mix, so different locations. So, now, if we're visually impaired, you could still enjoy the tour. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Tryanne, you need names for these. This Bobby Wankier and I didn't catch the names.
I got them.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. All right, I'll make a motion then if there's anyone else to approve Resolution Number R 2019-2504 for various allocations for funding to those who are ready into the minutes of the Tourism Advisory Board.
I'll second the motion. All in support of Resolution R 2019-2504, a resolution approving Tourism Advisory Board Recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, consideration of Resolution Number R 2019-2505, a resolution approving an agreement between Washington County and Big Horn Archaeological Consultants LLC for an environmental assessment on 20 acres near the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park. And Commissioner Iverson was going to speak to that. I think I spoke to it just a little bit earlier, but we are working on a RP&amp;P. Maybe Eric, you could cover that.
Yeah, this is part of a process. We've been working with the BLM for the past year to expand the Shooting Sports Park so the shotgun range has a little bit more space there and it's all moving the road. And we've gotten different answers at different times as to what we need to do archaeologically for that application. And so, what this, this is like phase two. Phase one was just over $6,000, I think, Ron. And then, phase two is another $7,000. And because those two come in at more than $10,000, we figured the best thing is to run it all through mission meetings. So, this is a combination of two contracts that making sure we're having all of, everything ready.
Consistent with county policy and purchasing ordinance. Okay. Questions, Commissioner?
It was pretty reasonable compared to some lengthy studies that run into 10 times that much for these equivalent amount of properties. So, it's, it's a great step forward and it puts into public use some property that maybe isn't as desirable for anything else. So, based upon that, I'll move that we approve Resolution Number R 2019-2505, which is an agreement between Washington County and Big Horn Archaeological Consultants LLC for an environmental assessment on 20 acres near the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park.
And I will second the motion. Seeing no further discussion needed, I call for the question. All in support of the Resolution 2019-2505, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number six, consideration of Resolution Number R 2019-2506, a resolution approving a complete reduction of property taxes for certain parcels owned by Home Heritage Center. Eric, you're kind of the tax guru on that.
So, Commissioners, you have a couple of these before you today that, that are people or entities that came in and asked for the charitable exemption to their property taxes. And in looking at it, we kind of decided that it, they'd be a better fit to come through this different exemption process where the County Commission can decide that it's in the public interest. where the county commission can just find that it's in the public interest that these entities aren't charged property taxes. The Home Heritage Center is is a building in Hildale that was previously used for Sunday religious use. Now it's used as more of a community center. They do some religious stuff in there. They do some educational stuff in there. And and they do some charitable stuff in there. So it didn't really fit under one of the exemptions, but but clearly it's used to benefit the public, and that that's what they're putting it for. What they're asking for is that you guys not only adjust their property taxes from this year down to zero, but also they have some back taxes owed for the last, I think, three years before that. And so they're asking for the full amount.
Are we able to do that, in your opinion?
Yeah, I think that you guys are able to do that under this provision. That's not normal. You guys don't normally back that far. And so that's something that.
That we could discuss. Okay. Questions, comments? The only question I would have is just the type of item that we would break general precedence for. I'm inclined to think yes, given the nature of this building is to serve residents in that area in a qualified manner. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Great, then. Item number R two thousand nineteen two five oh six, I move that we approve the resolution approving a complete reduction of property taxes, current and then the back taxes that were talked about for certain parcels owned by the Home Heritage Center.
I will second the motion. Hearing no further discussion or sensing that none is needed, I'll call for a vote on resolution R two thousand nineteen twenty five oh six. All in support of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven.
One thing, Eric, is that if they change the use of the building anyway, then this that would not qualify anymore. It goes back to.
This is a year-to-year, isn't it?
Yeah, so so this is this, under this, under this provision of the law, people come in every year. So you're doing a nineteen, a twenty nineteen reduction, but if it changed, then next year.
Very good.
They wouldn't be able to, they would come back and ask.
Thank you for that clarification. Good question. Item number seven is, I thought you said we had two of those.
Eight is one of them.
Oh, eight. They're just not quite in order. Okay. Item number seven, consideration of resolution number R two thousand nineteen twenty five oh seven, a resolution approving a municipal financial advisor agreement with Zion Public Finance. Commissioner Almquist.
You know, one of the most important things that the public needs to know is that despite having qualified staff and those that are employees that are fully versed in not only what our debt obligations are, what looking, you know, borrowing capacity we have and things looking forward, it is still wise to have an advisor that is a third party that sees that market even more clear and works in conjunction with our staff. So a request for proposals went out to any interested parties who would be that advisor, and it came back that the Zion's Public Finance gave us their proposal, which is before us and which qualifies in the areas that that we need. And some of those that are very important to us, one, we've worked with them before. So there's history there, and they have come and shown to us often with no additional charge, looking forward that they wanted us to be aware of, which was quite voluntary. But at the same time, when we turn to them for financing needs or refinancing, which over the last decade has been so vital to saving the public's money and not paying more interest and simply looking at early retirement of bonds or simply, you know, rebonding where where we need it. Having said that, they've given us the statistics, the timing, the history that have literally saved the county tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in in interest rates. So there's payments.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I've liked, is the interest rates going the way they do. They've identified opportunities when the rates have been low that we could refinance a bond and retire the general obligations, working with our clerk auditor, Kim Haef. And we've we've refinanced several issues over the past few years. And so I I think that Zion Public Finance has done a great job. You're making a motion then in support of?
Yes, this application to be approved municipal advisor for the county. It's a resolution two thousand nineteen two five zero seven, choosing Zion's Public Finance to fill that role.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in support of resolution R two thousand nineteen twenty five oh seven, a resolution approving Zion Public Finance as our financial advisor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number eight, consideration of resolution number R two thousand nineteen twenty five oh eight, a resolution approving a complete reduction of two thousand nineteen property taxes for certain parcels owned by Rural Housing Development Corporation, DBA, self-help homes. Eric?
Commissioners, this is one that I believe this is the third or fourth time it's come before you. This rural self-help homes is an entity that helps people who probably wouldn't otherwise qualify to get into their own home, use sweat equity to get in. And so they'll they'll build a cluster of houses at the same time, and the future owners of those homes go and spend time working on the homes, actually doing the things that they they're qualified to do. This one is a little bit sticky also because taxes are always assessed as of how the property was on January first, and these guys make some progress throughout the year. So as of January first, they had, I think, two big parcels. Now, nine months later, those have been subdivided into different things, and I think they've started building on those. But the taxes that are assessed are for those those entire parcels. And it would, we we looked at it, it'd be kind of a feat to try to figure out that some of those will be sold before the end of the year, and a lot of times we've prorated so that self-help gets forgiven for the time that they own it.
But once the owner gets the home, they're responsible for the tax.
In in this year, with the tax going to two parcels before they were subdivided, it'd be kind of a feat to figure out, figure all that out. And so what we're recommending is that if you guys choose to do this again, would be just to give the forgiveness for the full parcels.
The two parent parcels, as they were on January first.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Commissioner?
We don't have any on that one. It makes total sense. And sometimes you can't start immediately till it's developed. So this is a good step, helping those that don't have housing and that want to work for it. So I move that we approve the resolution number two thousand nineteen twenty five oh eight for a complete reduction of two thousand nineteen property taxes for certain parcels owned by Rural Housing Development Corp., DBA under self.
I'll second the motion and also call the question then on resolution two thousand nineteen twenty five oh eight. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, consideration of resolution number R two thousand nineteen twenty five oh nine, a resolution approving professional services agreements for school-based therapy for victims of crime. And Christie? Pike, wife of esteemed St. George Mayor, John Pike.
Yeah, we don't have to talk about him here, do we?
No. This is all, this is all about you.
No, this is actually all about kids.
That's right, and and the excellent work that you're doing.
Oh, we have a fabulous staff at the Children's Justice Center. So we applied for a grant with the Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, to be able to provide mental health therapy. You might remember last year, we we did our first one of these mental health therapy grants. And I am excited to let you know that as of year-to-date, as we started in January, we've been able to provide one hundred and sixty-seven therapy hours for fifty-seven different individuals who would not have had any, would not, it would not have been available to them otherwise. So in terms of intervening in the abuse cycle and making a difference in the lives of children and families, this is one of the biggest steps forward we've been able to make in a really long time. So we apply, one one issue that we had was that we were having a real hard time getting some kids into therapy. Parents are working. They're not able to do the driving. They're not supportive of therapy, whatever. Sometimes the parents are are the ones causing the problems. So one thing that has been successful in other counties that we decided we would try would be to put the therapists right in the schools, talk to the to the school district and a member from the school board. They were immensely supportive, and so we applied for and got this grant. So our total VOCA grant, just to give you an idea, for the fiscal years that started July first is two hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, which represents about forty-four percent of our total budget for that period. It's huge for us. So what we have before you are two professional service agreements for two different individuals who are qualified to be able to go and provide therapy for children in schools who have been victims of crimes. Our intent is that they will see Children's Justice Center clients first, and if there's extra ability and more hours, if there are more hours available, we have let the school counselors know that if children have been victims of a crime, they can qualify for some of those hours as well. So that is what is before you, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I've been assigned and gladly and welcome my association with the Children's Justice Center and their leadership under Christie. I think the key to it all, and you've said it well, but is to catch the fire before it turns into an inferno.
Right.
Therefore, at the school is where a lot of youth feel, one, more comfortable, but two, right there.
Right.
Two working parents or one, it doesn't matter. It's hard to say, okay, checking you out of school at one o'clock and buying lunch, and that's usually not enough time.
And it's not usually just a one-time thing. We're talking about a series of therapy that might be eight to twelve different sessions. That can really put a burden on some families. We will still have that availability if if some families want that. We're also serving secondary victims of crimes, so parents, siblings who have been secondary victims of those crimes qualify under this grant. And we also got a little bit of money for our multidisciplinary partners. So if we have law enforcement, child protective services, prosecution, other members of our multidisciplinary team who have been traumatized by some of these events, we have a few therapy hours available for them as well.
Please, Christie, tell us, because this isn't meeting the entire need, obviously.
This isn't even going to come close, but it but it's it's more than we've ever done before.
That's how you've got it set up, because of rotation, and that'll try to cover most schools where it's needed.
Um, we'll we'll divide, I believe it will probably end up being geographically. We will have them focus first on the on the high school and middle school kids, and then as there are hours available, go to the elementary schools as well. The school district is all in, and they have committed to have a space available. Counselors will work with with the therapist to pull kids out of class. We've got all of the agreements in place to get parental permission for all of that. So hopefully, everything's ready to go, and we've, we did interviews last week, and we want to get on top of this. It's it's, school year's already three, four weeks in. It's it, we need to get going. So so I didn't want to wait any longer to get this before you.
Well, it couldn't be more worth it, and especially amongst those who need somebody to trust. That's a big deal to them.
Well, and you know, I get lots of phone calls lately about people wanting to talk about sex trafficking in Southern Utah and what's the problem, and how how are we, how are we addressing it? Well, really, depending on what study you look at, kids who have been caught up in sex trafficking, between forty and ninety percent of them have been in the child welfare system previously. So if we can do a better job of helping them understand normal, feel normal, it might not be the right word, but healthy, and understand healthy relationships and healthy sexuality, that will go a long ways toward primary prevention of child sex trafficking.
Good luck in getting more grant money next time.
This is, this is great.
And we do have, they have said next year, we, that they would entertain adding one more therapist. So there would be three for the schools. So if we can, if we can get this going and get and and show that it the need and that we have unmet need, then then they'll work with us on more hours next year.
Anyone who complains about tax dollars being spent for VOCA grants and things like that don't understand that the cost is much greater later to deal with all kinds of things, including at the jail or other expenses.
VOCA funds don't come from tax dollars.
Oh, okay. Where do they?
They come from criminals' fines. It is, they're set aside for victims of crimes. They come from restitution.
Judges impose these.
The judges impose them, and it's put in a specific pot of money. And so it's specifically for victims of crimes. They're, it's not.
Money well spent.
No tax dollars. It's, yeah, it's to help these kids.
Oh, excellent, then.
Okay. Thank you. Since you've talked so much about it, I'll go ahead and make the motion in support of, and you can second.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion in support of resolution R two thousand nineteen twenty five oh nine, a resolution approving professional services agreements for school-based therapy for victims of crimes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the great job you're doing. Item number ten, a consideration of resolution number R two thousand nineteen twenty five ten, a resolution authorizing transferring of land to the Bureau of Land Management for inclusion in the Red Cliffs National Conservation Area. I'd give a little background on this. In March two thousand nine, Congress passed, and President Obama signed the Washington County Lands Bill. The Washington County Lands Bill took the BLM-owned property of the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve and incorporated it into a national conservation area, but it did not include the private property parcels that are intermingled within that area. And working with the BLM a little over a year ago, we successfully transferred a large portion of the Long Valley area for some of the inholdings in the NCA. And Mr. Robert Brennan chose to donate, as a means of incentivizing that exchange, land to the county, and this resolution would transfer that land acquired by the county to the BLM, where under the specifics of that act, it will become incorporated into the NCA. And so that is the reason or consistency with the two thousand nine lands bill that we would be transferring this land from county ownership, which was donated to us by a private landowner, to the BLM. Eric, is there anything that I've missed on that?
Oh, that that was great, Commissioner. Just so that you guys are aware, we are still waiting on getting the final deed from BLM, so.
Does this need to be subject to something?
Well, so so you're, what you're approving is the transaction, and then when we get the deed, then then the clerk auditor can.
So this would be a resolution authorizing a transaction. Okay, I understand. Thank you. Questions, Commissioner? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Hey, Chair, I move that we approve resolution, resolution R two thousand nineteen twenty five ten, a resolution authorizing the, you want, you said the transaction of transferring. I want to get that right. Transaction of transferring land to the Bureau of Land Management for inclusion in the Red Cliffs National Conservation Area.
And I will second the motion. If there's no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in support of resolution R two thousand nineteen twenty five ten, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Eric, I'm still trying to figure out this agenda. It seems like item eleven is resolution twenty five eleven, and and they didn't put anything on the last item, so I don't know how we'll ever close this machine, this this meeting without a resolution. I'm just making fun a little bit, but a lot of resolutions today. Item number eleven, consideration consideration of resolution number R two thousand nineteen twenty five eleven, a resolution accepting forty acres of land in the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve. And so this is just the second step?
This is a different piece of property.
Okay.
And actually, the the last one that you just approved.
Oh, this is the Brennan donation right now.
This is the new donation.
Yeah.
The last one was from a year and a half ago. You guys had previously approved that, but BLM changed. Is it Brennan? And this one is a is a new donation from Mr. Brennan. And the county will still, will have to decide whether. And the county will still, will have to decide whether this gets donated to BLM, whether the county holds it, whether the county gives it to the state. Like there are different options. This, this one's more flexible than the, the other one, we had an agreement that said it needed.
Now, Mr. Brennan made three donations on this particular trade. One went to Hurricane, one to Washington, and one to Washington County or how?
One to the state, I think. I think it was Washington, the state and Washington.
Washington County, City of Hurricane. Okay, thank you for clearing that up. It's great that we're really making significant progress, I believe, on acquiring those inholdings. It's the most significant I've seen in a while. Kind of a starts and fits thing. Commissioner, have you got any questions on the transaction?
You know, I really don't. I've seen the map and these parcels as they peel off, out of private ownership is a good thing to consolidate. And Eric's being very humble, but he's worked very hard to make this happen. And so kudos to you for that. I'll move that we approve Resolution two thousand nineteen twenty five 11, accepting 40 acres of land in the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve.
Thank you, I'll second. And if there's no discussion, all in support of Resolution R two thousand nineteen twenty five 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, we're to the last item on the agenda, but I've noticed that we've got Chief Deputy Nate Brooksby and our chief from Hurricane Valley. Is there any public safety notice, cautions, words of advice that you'd like to share
It's not very often you get a weatherman to admit an error. We got notice last week that the National Weather Service predicted that our wildland fire season was off by six weeks. Rather than starting six weeks ago, they're telling us that moving forward, that we'll see what we would normally see in a wildland fire season. Just ask everyone to still remain diligent and try to, if you have to use fire, use it very wisely because we're looking at the fire season going very late into the fall. Be careful.
Thank you.
So primarily, I was here, Casey, have any questions on the firearms purchase? A big picture, it looks part of the.
You can tell us a little about that, but.
Yeah, well, you mentioned it makes sense. We're the only agency in the county that didn't provide that. We had provided it through a series of uniform allowances, but the reality is if you're a new hire, you're in the hole about $1,800 for about two years until those catch up. And then in the, in the backend, it becomes more of a bonus that you have your foundation for your uniform and your duty belt and all that. So it's a good step forward and I think we're still picking at the concept of a quartermaster system. So we're just crunch to the numbers. I think in the long run, it'll be a savings in tax dollars though. Echo your thanks for this chamber, Suzie. Great. I went to the first meeting not knowing that I was going to be on the board, but then was told I was going to be on the board. So working with that group was amazing for what, the task they had ahead of them, they did an amazing job. They were basically starting from scratch. So I appreciate your recognizing her and Pam, the chamber and all the volunteers, so.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you do. We appreciate you. Commissioner, any other comments?
I can only say that last week, two events were held to honor those who are in search and rescue and showing them some appreciation, one in Colob, one in Pine Valley, and they were both well-attended. And of course, when Sheriff Joseph Cooks, they know they've eaten well. And only being able to attend the one in Pine Valley, I can say that giving back to them is essential because so much of their volunteer service is needed in the county and especially if you're out in those remote areas and you need to be rescued. The event ended, I'd say about nine o'clock, and one hour later, they were called out. And so they'd eat. Joe MacArthur, who is one of their support staff and worked well with search and rescue, he helped cook as well. And at 11 o'clock, he left his house, got home at three, and then was back to work at five. So it's always a long night, it seems like, and they deserve that respect and a little give back and they appreciated it. So thanks, Nate, and tell the sheriff again, thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other business, Les Nicole, you have anything?
Nope, I think that's.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.